Good morning. I'm Van Williams with Sedgwick County Communications. Welcome to the April 1st, 2020 meeting of the Sedgwick County Commission, and thank you for joining us. You'll notice that we have an unusual seating arrangement today, as well as no members of the public or the media in attendance. This is due to precautions related to the ongoing coronavirus pandemic. Please stay home, continue to practice social distancing, and good hygiene to protect yourself and others. Stay updated on local COVID-19 information by visiting the Sedgwick County website. Today's agenda items include a COVID-19 update from Health Director Adrian Byrne, board appointments, and procurement items. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Meitzner.
Good morning. Thank you, Van. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners, and those watching on KPTS and other venues. Obviously, it's a different environment here among the Commissioners, but I'm glad everybody could join us. Everybody is safe so far. So with that, we will call the meeting to order, and we will have an invocation, a moment of silence, followed by a flag salute. So please join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought, I didn't. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
At this point, I'd like to hand the microphone and the camera to our county commissioner and our attorney, Tom Stoltz, to kind of set the rules of what's been going on.
Thanks. Thank you, Chairman, Tom Stoltz, County Manager. And I'm joined up in this unusual seating arrangement by the County Counselor, Mike Papoun. Just a couple of housecleaning issues very quickly, and to further what Van just talked about, this unique seating arrangement inside this commission room. For those members of the public who are not familiar with our room, it is relatively limited in scope and size. So what we have done today is put all the Commissioners into the bull plan area where they can maintain the proper six feet of social distancing, which is recommended by CDC. We are also limiting the capacity of this room to nine people. So essentially, you have five Commissioners, a Clerk, the Counselor, myself, and a Speaker at the podium. As such, as we bring Speakers to the podium, there will be slight delay because Assistant County Manager Tanya Cole is the door guard to make sure that we maintain and keep our capacity where it should be. She will be bringing people in as they are to speak so that we stay adherent to the nine-person rule. It is possible in the future, this room setup is good and safe. It is possible in the future that we may go to virtual meetings, and at that time, we will announce the rules of that type of meeting, but it is something that is possible for the future. It's unique not having the public here. I know that all of you are uncomfortable with that. It's unique not having media here. That is, it is not our way. We are transparent and open to the public. In this unique time, though, we are going to continue to gain information from the public, and they are allowed to speak by sending emails to the Communications Department, and we will take all the emails received up to 5:00 p.m. on the Tuesday before the Wednesday meeting, and all Commissioners will get copies of those Tuesday evening for their review and any potential comment that they want to make during the public agenda portion of the meeting. We have, we did that yesterday, had pretty good success. We have 62 emails that you've all been provided copies of. Some of them are very similarly themed, but I will leave it up to the Commissioners to talk about, under Public Agenda, whatever emails they would wish to bring up. We'll continue to do that into the future. So for the public listening, if you want to communicate with Commissioners in a public setting and you want it as part of this record, please send an email to the communications area. We'll put further information out on our website on how to do that before Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. Mike would like to talk about executive session rules now. Mike?
Thank you, Commissioners. Mike Papoun, County Counselor. When Attorney General Derek Schmidt issued his guidelines to allow us to have this kind of a public meeting and not be in violation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, he set out a number of criteria that would need to be followed as part of that process. The County Manager just went through the discussion process and described how public comment would be handled. That was one of the requirements that the AG wanted at the beginning of the meeting. The other one was, we were going to have to describe at the beginning of the meeting process what will be used for closed and executive sessions if they apply. And since we do have an executive session today, I will point out for the public and for you that what we will be doing today, because of our meeting requirements and because we want to keep proper distance, we are going to continue just to stay in this room, but turn off all electronic devices so that nobody from the outside will be able to hear in, except to be able to dial into a specific number as by way of a conference call, and we have a couple of attorneys that will be doing that later. But that is how the executive session is going to be handled today.
Thank you, Mike and Tom. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've heard from Tom, and you've been in receipt of the public emails that came in as of 5:00 o'clock last night, 62 emails. I know that each of us has received hundreds, at least 100 I have, and another 25 to 35, 40 phone calls. So, but with that, I don't know if any Commissioner wants to share any of the information, other than that we've all received it and it'll be part of the public record. I'll open it up if there's any comment.
I will be sharing when the topic is discussed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just would say, I did go through each one of those emails, read every single one of them, and I've even categorized them in different folders, so I kind of understand the perspective of the different emails.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I did read all of the emails last night and a few more this morning that I received. We also got some public comments that were written for me this morning that I read, and I'll have more comments later in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same goes for me. I've received a lot of emails and opened them all. And phone calls.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of March 11th, 2020.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes from our last meeting, March 11th, weeks ago, and I hope you all had a chance to read them and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Been motioned and seconded, approve the minutes.
I'll make sure I'm on the right line for when the fire district issues come up. Is anybody there?
Yes, we are. We're in the middle of our commission meeting.
I think that that's muted.
Oh, sorry.
Hello?
Unmute it.
I apologize, everybody. Little technical difficulties.
When it turns green, I believe that we're live. We hear you. We're in the middle of the meeting, though. Do you hear us?
Just over the unsealed counties' minutes that were last here.
The show must go on.
I think we had a motion in a second.
Yes, we did.
There's no further questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring child abuse prevention month.
Fellow Commissioners, I do have a proclamation to read, and we have a response and appreciation from them. So I will read. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and therefore building the foundations of communities. And whereas prevention happens in partnership, we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas, by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. Now therefore be resolved that I, Chairman Pete Meitzner, along with Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize April 2019, 2020, Ms. Print, we recognize April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Sedgwick County, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. You've heard the proclamation. Motion to accept or approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been a motion, second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Along with that, we did receive a letter from the Child Abuse of Kansas. Dear Sedgwick County Commissioners, on behalf of Prevent Child Abuse Kansas, the Kansas Children's Service League, and the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, thank you for taking the time today to read and sign the proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. Although child abuse prevention takes place year-round, during April, we shine the spotlight on child abuse prevention programs and strategies like home visiting, parent education, mutual self-help support, mental health services, respite care, expanding the availability of affordable childcare and substance abuse treatment. This year, we are learning how to do this in a virtual world. Although we are physically distant right now, we are working to help the families we serve maintain social connections. April 3rd is Wear Blue, Wear Blue Day across the state. We urge you to wear blue and share your blue selfies with us by tagging @MyKCSL and using @GreatChildhoods and @WearBlueDay. Strengthening families is the best investment the state and communities can make for our future. Every $1, Kansas invests on the front end, save $7 or more in services on the back end. We know that all children deserve great childhoods. Children who are raised in loving and supportive environments are more likely to grow and help secure healthy communities and be more productive, prosperous workers. The 1,800 children, 1,800, I'm sorry, the 1,800 children parent helpline is available 24/7 every day to help with parenting questions. Again, that's 1,800 children, and it provides resources and referrals. This anonymous phone line is available across the state to everyone. Thank you again. So with that, I'll make that part of the record as well. I'll make that part of the record. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, accept the resignation of Tom Hager from the Sedgwick County 3rd District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. Item C is accepting the resignation of Tom Hager, who is on Commissioner Dennis's Citizens' Advisory Board. We'd ask that you accept his resignation.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Tom's service. I know he has other obligations that he has to comply with, so at this time, I move that we accept the resignation of Tom Hager.
Second.
Been motioned, second, to accept the resignation. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, accept the resignation of Hugh Nix from the Sedgwick County 4th District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. This is the resignation of Hugh Nix to Commissioner Cruz's 4th District Citizens' Advisory Board, asking you to accept his resignation.
Thank you, Mike Papoun. I just want to say thank you to Hugh for his service. There's a lot of things going on. He said that he wanted to spend his time. He's now on the Planning Commission, and that takes up a lot of his time, and so I just appreciate his service and would ask to accept the resignation.
I'll second that. Been a motion, then a second. Any comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item E, Sedgwick County Health Department update on COVID-19.
Ms. Adrian Byrne, welcome to the commission.
Thank you and good morning. Adrian Byrne, Sedgwick County Health Director. So as of yesterday, and we all know these numbers have changed quite a bit, but as of yesterday, Kansas had 428 cases of COVID-19. Sedgwick County had 59 cases, but that again was as of late yesterday afternoon. At our small drive-through, we took samples to be tested by 16 residents, and we'll know their test today or tomorrow. So as mentioned earlier in the week, we do have community spread of COVID-19 due to the amount of positive cases not related to travel. So several people have asked about quarantine and isolation, because the two of those get very confusing to keep apart or know what is what. So quarantine is when someone has either been exposed through traveling to one of the areas that has a lot of cases, or has come into contact with someone that is positive for COVID-19. And when someone is quarantined, they stay home for 14 days and monitor their symptoms. And if they were to, if at the end of the 14 days, they feel good, then at day 15, they are free to go about their business. If they develop any of the symptoms during that time, then they would be tested, and if they were positive, then they would need to remain home for seven days from onset of being ill, or three days of being symptom and fever-free after that. But so quarantine is for those people that do not show any symptoms. They're not ill, but they've been exposed to someone that has COVID-19, whether they know who that person is or not, that they've been exposed to someone that has COVID-19, or maybe they've touched a surface and touched their face, and then it got in that way. So quarantine or isolation is when someone does have symptoms. And if we had available supplies, everyone would be tested, and we'd know for sure if they needed to be isolated. So isolation occurs when someone has symptoms of COVID-19. They have a fever, they may have shortness of breath, and fever, shortness of breath, cough, and it's usually a dry cough. So when those people are tested and they're positive, then they need to stay home until those symptoms are gone, either for three days with no pain reliever to reduce the fever, or symptom-free, or remain home seven days from when they first develop symptoms, whichever is longer. Now, there are doctors in town, because of people not matching KDHE's criteria for testing, that they have recommended, because of having symptoms, that they stay home for those, that same period of time, seven days or three days after their symptoms are gone, whichever is longer. So the key thing is isolation. If someone's isolated, they're sick. They have symptoms, whether mild or not, they have symptoms of COVID-19. If someone is quarantined, they don't have any symptoms. They are not ill. And when we have a case, and we have several, our disease investigators call that person and then find out when they were last at their place of employment, and they also contact the supervisor to confirm that when they said they were last at work is when they were last at work. And then they talk with the person about all the people they've been in contact with, and then it's investigated just how long they were in contact with those people, because a close contact has to be within six feet, which is why it's so important to stay outside of six feet. If someone is within six feet for more than 10 minutes, they're going to be considered a close contact and are going to be called and asked to quarantine. So those are the quarantine people that have been a close contact of someone that is ill. So communications, since this is just confusing, communication has developed a brief video to help explain. So one of the other questions that we get a lot is, I've been in close contact with someone who's quarantined. Should I be quarantined? No. Unless that person develops symptoms, there's no need for contacts of people quarantined to stay home. And that is one of the, probably one of the most questions that we get from employees and supervisors and just people in general, because there's a lot of information coming at us, and it's really hard to keep it all separated. But a contact of someone quarantined does not need to stay home unless that person develops symptoms, and then they would, if they were deemed positive, then anyone close to them would be contacted and put in quarantine. So that's how that works, but keep on asking, because I know it's a lot to keep straight. So with the Sedgwick County Health Department, we expected to have 1,200 swabs in, because we already have the saline solution, which is the media to be able to transport to a lab to be tested or sent to KDHE. We were informed late yesterday that those swabs are not arriving as expected, and we can expect those in about three or four weeks. So we reached out to others to see, and there's, we found a vendor that will drop them here quickly in two weeks. So in the meantime, we continue, as the county does, to look for those supplies that we need. Now, we have screened over 600 people through a partnership with United Way 211. If someone believes they may have the symptoms or are feeling ill, or believes they came in contact with someone, or has recently traveled from one of those areas and has questions, they call 211, and 211 will screen them based on symptoms, and if they meet criteria, then they connect them with our nurse triage line, Sedgwick County Health Department, and they'll question them again, and then schedule them to have samples taken. And we have actually taken samples, and again, it's really confusing, because you'll hear test sites, that there are all these test sites around Sedgwick County, and so, you know, don't want to confuse people, but the labs are actually the places that test. So when someone says there's a test site at Via Christie, there's a test site at Hunter Health or Health Core, they're actually sampling the person that is ill, and they take this particular type of swab that's flexible, because it has to go way back in the nasal cavity where the most of the virus would be sitting, and take that sample. So testing site is really where samples are being taken, and then they are shipped off either to KDHE's lab in Topeka, or one of our labs here, if they have a contract with them. So we have taken samples from 145. We have just under 160. We have the capability at this point to continue testing, sampling, to be able to test about 150 people, and we continue to ask for supplies from our state health department, and we will continue, as our purchasing and the county is doing, is continue to reach out every day, sometimes every hour, to see if our vendors somehow have supplies that they can send. So it's taken a long time to get our contract with Quest. There are two labs, Quest and Lab Core, although I did hear that AMS was also testing. This is new for all of them, so getting contracts, even though it wasn't on our end, because Sedgwick County is expediting everything to make this happen, once we got it from Quest, we had it back to them in a day. So it's taken almost two weeks to get that, our contract with Quest finalized. But what Quest will allow us to do is to take samples from people that don't meet the strict criteria of KDHE. So what we would like to do, and as more samples or as more supplies come in, we will, we want to be able to test those people that have symptoms, but right now, with KDHE, they need to be over 60 in symptomatic or pre-existing conditions, and so that really limits the amount of people that we can take samples from to help us get a feel of how much this is in our community. So we are going to slowly be doing that. We're going to, at our West Central location, where we do have a small drive-through and have for about a week and a half or so, it's all by appointment, and we will continue to take appointments. Our goal is to be able to have a larger drive-through at a different location, and we are looking at three different locations right now. The parking garage by Lewis Gander Mountain, a EMS station north of Wichita, and a parking lot near West Central right now. And we are able, if, when we expand to six hours, right now, we're limiting it to two because of supplies, but we're able to get a good 70 people through per hour. And so as we get, so that's why we're only open for, you know, an hour or two, because people come in and we're done. And right now, we're able to get tested, the amount of people that call, we're able to take supplies from the people, samples from the people that call each day from 211 to our nurse triage line. I think that a lot of the community are aware that the criteria for being able to be tested through a lab are pretty stringent, so we only have so many people calling. But our, again, our goal soon is to be able to take our samples to Quest so that anyone with symptoms can be sampled and then tested. But you can imagine that we're going to need a few more samples, a few more supplies than what we have right now, to be able to do that with more of our population, but that is our goal. And I will answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Adrian. That's a lot of information you shared with us. It's nice to know that there is some more testing going on than it was a few weeks ago.
Yes.
You said 59 cases in Sedgwick County. Let's see, two days ago, we had our 1:00 briefing, we said 48 cases. So I guess yesterday was somewhere in between that, and then it's now 59.
And I can, well, that was yesterday. I can guarantee a day it's up 10 or 15.
Okay, all right. So, thank you. So, but still going up, not spiking too bad, but we're not testing, so we really don't know the exact impact. Okay, other questions?
Quick question. I saw on TV where they've got tests out now. President--
I, I saw on TV where they've got tests out now, President was demonstrating that can get the results back in just minutes. Are, are we trying to get something like that here?
We, we are looking at, let's see, Tom, you have, there, there's a particular group of people that are looking at, at all the types of information that we get about testing available, and there's a lot of information that, that comes down. In Wichita, I don't know of anyone that has the 45-minute rapid test, but hopefully that is going to be coming.
Supplies and testing are probably our, our biggest concern right now, is how that we can test the people. Last week, I know Commissioner Cruz and I, I believe, both got a phone call from some folks out at, at the VA. Can you tell me where we're at on finding out if we can get some of the emergency supplies that the VA has?
That is not something that I have information on. That is a separate group that is looking at all of that, but I haven't heard that we're getting access to more swabs from the VA.
Yeah, I might comment on that, Commissioner Dennis. We did reach out on Friday, when you got the initial contact from the VA and dispatched a courier out there to obtain what we were told would be about 342 PPE sets. When we got there, we were advised that there's process that has to be adhered to before we could acquire that, which we are now going through. It's a, basically a request through emergency management, which will then work its, filter its way back to VA, and we are going through that process right now to try to acquire those supplies.
Hopefully, with the, the weekly call with our hospital system that Chairman Meisner and I sat in on this week, that we will be having next week as well, we're gonna get the VA to be on that, and so that we can ask that question directly, so that we can be sure to be working together as a hospital system, included with Wesley and Ascension, and now our VA. So hopefully, when we're all on the same call, we can ask those questions and have the answers right away that we can report back to you.
Well, that brings up one other issue that I'm very concerned about, and we are a board, and we all require the same kind of information to make logical decisions from. And unfortunately, because of the way that the interpretation is on the open meetings, the board can't participate in, in the conversations that Commissioner Cruz talks about that they're having. And I believe that that's unfortunate, because we can't make wise decisions as a board unless all five of us are informed of what's going on. I'm even more concerned about it, because any one of us can dial up, the, the White House has conference calls periodically, and we can all five dial in and listen to that. NACO has conference calls periodically, and we can all five dial in, we can listen to that. KAC has conference calls periodically, and all five of us can dial in and listen to that. Yet, something that is so close to home, and that is here in Sedgwick County, how do we manage in Sedgwick County? We don't have the ability for all five commissioners to be able to participate in a phone call that is so critical for us to be able to make decisions on. We have to find a way that we can all five be involved in any kind of, of information so that we can make logical decisions. So I am very, very disturbed about the fact that we cannot do our job, because we are limited on just listening in, and all I care about is listening in. I'm, I'm fine with our, our chair and our, our pro temp being in a speaking mode, but I think all of us need to be at least in a listening mode. Do you have anything to say about that, Mr. Papoun?
Yes, Commissioner Dennis, and I understand your frustration, and we, we discussed this yesterday. I, my interpretation of the Open Meetings Act right now would be that if you participated, if the entire commission participated in a call, even if three decided to mute their buttons, and you're discussing county business, and you, all of you as the Board of Health talking with doctors, it's certainly county business, and whoever else might be on the, be on the line, then that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, unless we go through similar process we're going through now, which will allow the public and the media to have, have access as well. The examples that you've mentioned, the White House, NACO, those kinds of things, conferences, that isn't specifically Sedgwick County business. That's, it may be in general coronavirus updates or, or the like, but that is like going to a conference or something where all five of you can sit and learn and be present, but you're not discussing specifically Sedgwick County business. There's gotta be a way to, to do this, where you still get to hopefully have a recording of that call or something, so that you understand what's being said. But to do what you want to do, I think we have to have something similar to here right now.
So I guess I'll just, I hear what you're saying, but I think that our manager has done a very good job of, he sent out an email recapping that whole entire call at 5:00. Some might have missed it because of the barrage of emails that we're getting, but that was communicated to everybody at the end of the day.
I don't disagree with you. I read the summary of that, but I still believe that the five commissioners act as a board. We don't act individually. And if we are a board, we all five have to be participating in things that impact Sedgwick County. I can understand what Mr. Papoun said, and the fact that a lot of the things I discussed are national, or don't directly relate to, to Sedgwick County. But what is more important is what does happen in Sedgwick County, and that's where we have to be involved. So we have to have some kind of a change, and we have to have it very, very quickly, because five of us need to be involved in decisions. We can't have two commissioners and a manager be involved in the decisions. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I agree with Commissioner Dennis, but if that's not possible, what I've been doing is I check in with the chair every day, including, I think we talked both Saturday and Sunday, right, Commissioner Meisner, Chairman? So I, I feel like the best way for me to get information is, is reaching out to the chairman, calling the manager. I called him over the weekend as well, messaged, I know the, at least sent text message to the counselor. So I think until something changes, we just have to be responsible for collecting the information from the sources that we, that we have.
Well, and no decisions are being made on these phone calls. So, I mean, that's, if, if you're concerned about decisions being made on the phone calls, rest assured that there are no decisions being made. It's, it's information collected and then disseminated back to the board. That's what happened. So I, I guess I feel your frustration, and, and I would love for all of us to have these conversations, but right now, as things sit, that's just not possible. And so I feel like our manager is doing the best job that he can to keep everybody informed, and it's our responsibility to talk amongst us about decisions that we need to make together.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Appreciate the conversation, and I, I agree with Commissioner Dennis on, on the frustration. I think that we ought, we ought to be able to, to participate, at least by listening. I think that's reasonable, but I know it's, it's an interpretation, it seems like to me. I would liken this to an email. Every once in a while, I might receive an email that is from a commissioner, and I know that all, all commissioners are getting the same email. It's not interactive, but it is a, a commissioner speaking to, to the rest of the members of the board. That has happened in the past. And I think that's allowed under coma, because it's not, not an interactive discussion. So I, I think there's a lot of arguments that could be made in either case, but I'd like to go back to the topic, if that's okay. I had, just a clarification question. You said there was about 70 people per hour for a couple of hours per day being tested. Is that what you said? Not being tested, but going through the line, I should say.
Well, that, that we, we could, that we are set up to easily do, do that many. But currently, the amount that we have been receiving calls from that, that meet the KDHE criteria, has been 25 on average.
So you could do up to 70 per hour? Again, that's, that's probably a, a interview, but you only test those that are, that are, have the symptoms and hit, hit all the qualifications for being tested?
Yes, and they, they have already been prescreened, so it's a very quick process. Could probably do more than 70. It might take three minutes per person, because they've already been prescreened by 211, and then they've been re-screened by our nurse triage line, and then they've been scheduled an appointment.
Curiously, who, who's covering the cost of this testing? Is this a KDHE-covered test, or how's this being paid for?
Well, currently, there, yes, there's no cost to KDHE. When a private lab is used, then there will be a cost per test, but currently KDHE is absorbing, sending out the material to, for people to be sampled, and then taking care of testing that as well.
And so the contract with, you're trying to set, set up a contract with Quest, that would, that would shorten the, the amount of time to get the, the results back, guys? Because that's a local lab?
It is, but I believe they send the specimens to California. So it depends. I, I've heard, I, first I heard three or four, and then I've heard a couple, but Dr. Minz said he sent something the other day that took a week because they were so overwhelmed. So unfortunately, I'm not sure. It's gotta be quicker. And KDHE really has been, has a quick turnaround. If something, if they have something in the morning or afternoon, we will know, we will know that day. If it's later in the day, then it'll be the next morning. They are just about to, to get another machine that allows them to test twice as many, and so that will increase that, that turnaround time as well.
And if I understand correctly, before they get a COVID-19 test, they've, they're, they will be tested for pneumonia and flu, they'd have to get negative results on those tests before they're qualified for a COVID-19?
We, we don't have to do that, but that is the criteria through, I mean, we're, we are sampling someone, whether or not they've necessarily had that, but that is the, the criteria, that they are supposed to already have been di, you know, been tested for those to know. But the reality is that we don't know that someone can't have both at the same time.
So I'm curious, if we had more test kits, would, would there be more people being tested in the, in that line, or is this?
Absolutely.
We would be testing more?
Absolutely.
Is that here, you correctly said we tested 16 yesterday?
We tested some.
That's what I thought you said.
I may, I can't find it through my notes.
While you're looking for your, your data, I think you said about 600 cases altogether so far.
16, yeah.
Well, we, we have screened 600 and have actually swabbed 145 people in the last two weeks.
Okay. Just as a, I guess, a challenge for the commission and for our manager, there, there was at least one Johnson County commissioner that was, was talking about it at least a week ago, that there was a, a private company that was offering up to 1,000 tests per day, and I, I assume there'd be a, a financial contract that would cause, you know, that would cost the county money. I'd like to know if, if there's any lab in Wichita or Sedgwick County area that, that, again, for a fee, would, would actually step this way up? I mean, for Johnson County to actually be offered 1,000 tests per day? Again, I know that's gonna cost money, but my question would be, do we have those options here? And is this coming down to a, a financial decision, or is there just no resources here that's offering that type of testing here?
It's more the, it, it's more the, the swabs. Now, Quest has said, and we haven't sent any samples to them, so we, so I really can't accurately say how long it would take, because they've told us that they can test thousands a day. So it, it could be, it could be a 24, 48-hour turnaround. It's still new for them also, and they're just beginning to test for COVID-19. So we'll, we'll know when we send our first sample there, how long it's gonna take.
I guess, since we're such a manufacturing community, I, I would challenge our manufacturers to step up and understand what needs to be produced, and see if they can retool and produce, produce these, these kits here locally, if that's what it takes. Sounds like it's just a piece of, I don't know exactly what this is, but a swab, you describe it as a swab. It doesn't sound like that's all that complicated to me, so.
It, it's a, a particular type of swab, and the, the manager has a separate team working on all of that, retooling, reaching out to companies to see what they can produce, if they have the equipment to do something similar. I mean, so it's like all the stones are, are being overturned to try to get what we need for our residents.
Well, I guess I'd like to be on record saying that I think that there ought to be, that ought to be one of our intentional efforts as a county, is trying to get that stepped way, way up. And I think that, again, knowing, knowing Johnson County was offered $1,000, sorry, 1,000 tests per day, optioned more than a week ago, and they turned it down, it sounds like. I, I guess I'd like to know, that'd be a good goal for our community, is get that type of testing available here.
It, it would, and, and the, the tests, our contract is approximately $68 per person with Quest when we do begin using them. Johnson County, I, I know what their goal is. I don't know if they have, they, they are hindered in similar ways to how we are and everyone else, as far as supplies to be able to sample that many. So I know what their goal is. I don't know for sure if they have that, that, the ability to test that many people right now, but that is our goal, and that, their goal, and we have a similar one, that's for sure.
Let me ask some other questions at some point, but thank you for those, for those comments and clarifications. Thank you, Chairman.
Can, can you speak to Johnson County's strategy to increase testing?
They, and it, it's all a, a best calculated assumption, because there, there's no really set criteria when looking at how many should we actually, I'll just use the word test, how, how many people can we actually test in our community? Part of it, again, it, they are hindered by lack of resources, you know, just as we are. So they are planning to test 3,000 to 5,000 people total, depending upon how the pandemic evolves and the prevalence shown in their, in their initial sampling studies. They're, they're going to begin, I believe, with approximately 350 testing asymptomatic. In, in the best-case scenario, we would be able to test asymptomatic and symptomatic people. If we, testing the asymptomatic people would give us an idea of just how many people there are in Sedgwick County that don't have symptoms but can transmit. I believe New York, when they did that, that they found that one out of 1,000 were walking around New York that could transmit that were asymptomatic, that, that were not ill. So there's that piece, and then the other piece is getting the prevalence of just how much is the illness in our community by testing those, those who have symptoms. And not just with the, the strict criteria that KDHE has, but they have that criteria because of a lack of resources, mainly a lack of resources. So that, that is why Johnson County, and we're able to, want to open that up, to be able to test those that are, have respiratory symptoms, period.
Thank you.
Another question on testing. Last Friday, when I was discussing this with some folks, and I think Commissioner Cruz was also, Senator Tyson, I believe it was, state senator, identified something called vaccines to go, and said that they could do as many tests as we wanted. Have we contacted them and find out what they could do?
I know someone has looked into that, because that, that has been around.
Two comments on that. Yes, Brent Shelton has contacted that group. And back to Commissioner Howell's statement regarding private business, we have, for the last week to 10 days, we have been in constant contact with business community. There is capacity to make a swab, for example. It's all about materials now, and they're having trouble getting raw materials to manufacture whatever it is we needed, whether it's N95 masks or surgical mask. It's all about materials now, that there is, is a, a statewide shortage, I would dare say a national shortage, and probably a worldwide shortage right now of those materials. So that's the roadblock in moving forward with that. We have people ready and positioned and can do it, but they can't find materials. I, I will get an update on what Brent has found out from this group. It comes down to, we get a lot of emails and a lot of offers, and then when we really, as Adrian mentioned, we have a, we have a, a team working on this, because commodities right now are number one on the list for our county and state. And as the team dives into this and actually begin to make contact, some of what is being purported to, for delivery is, is just not there. It's not true. So we are working through all of these leads. I can assure you, and Adrian and I have talked a couple of times, if we can increase capacity of tests, she believes it is critical. I think Dr. Minz believes it is critical. We all believe it is critical. And if we can get our hands on that for a, and it's, it, Commissioner Howell, it is a money issue to some degree, but I will present you with the money issue, and you guys can make the decision as a policy board on whether we're gonna spend this type of money. To the JOCO solution, they authorized up to half a million. I'm ready to come in and probably do half of that with you, and we could do 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 tests in our region, which I think would be substantial, to help Adrian and Dr. Minz strategically work on how we can reopen this county when, when the time comes. So we're on it 24/7. It's frustrating because of lack of commodity, but we are chasing every lead, and I will keep you as aware as I can, and, and it's dozens right now. It's more than one or two. It's dozens. Brent Shelton and Joe Thomas, members from EM. Brent Shelton and Joe Thomas, members from EM, members from health, members from finance, all working on this together as a team. And we will, I'll try to get you a summary of when we get to a, to a summary point. Right now, it's all dialogue and what can you do and what can't you do.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to clarify. I mean, it was maybe a week ago, maybe more than a week ago. We, we heard speculation that there was thousands of people asymptomatic in Wichita, walking around potentially. But you just said a minute ago that they tested asymptomatic in New York, that they, they had about one out of 1,000.
There's a lot, there's a lot of people in, in New York. But there's no way to know how many, if we have hundreds or how many people that we have that are asymptomatic in Sedgwick County that are actually able to transmit.
Do you know how many people they've tested, how many they tested for COVID that were asymptomatic? We got that data? No?
A, no, I don't have the number. We can get that, but they tested thousands in order to get to that number, that they had one out of every 1,000.
Are we tracking the technology on the, on the antibody test that potentially is being developed as well? Are we watching that?
If something, if something comes of substance, we will be all over it.
I'll comment on that too, Commissioner. We have, we have physicians in our employ. Dr. Gallagher is watching that. There is promising technology on the antibody test, which would be even a more true test on asymptomatic people. And we are watching that. And as Adrian has said, the second that becomes valid and obtainable, we will, we are positioned to obtain.
All right. Thank you. That's all my questions. Can we show it down?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the other day we were getting, getting some thoughts emailed to us about certain restrictions that we wanted to look at as far as how many people were going to some of our local stores and stuff. Was that something we were going to address or not?
Not, not sure.
Okay.
No.
Not a problem.
I think we're under the.
I might chime in there. It is on my list. I've, and I think Justin Wagner also has a list of just technical kinds of things on what should be open, what shouldn't be open for the board to debate. I don't know if we're ready for that yet or not. But I, every Thursday, I have a conference call with the food distribution providers. And the one ask that they did have is for the Board of Health to consider some type of ruling directive order that would limit people going to the store to come in individually, or if elderly, one helper. One of the things that they're seeing is entire families or groups of teenagers coming in, and they're wanting some assistance from the Board of Health to make a determination. If we could push out, that that is essentially not allowed. And it would give the store some means to then enforce that. So that's the only ask that I have from the food providers at this time. And Commissioner, I don't know if it's the proper time to talk about that or not or not, but it was on my list.
May as well. I think now, now it'd be all right.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Manager and, and Mr. Chairman, because I did, I wanted to know when the right time to talk about the abortion clinic was.
Do we want to bring in Justin right now?
Yeah, do we want to get Justin?
If you are ready, sir, to transition the discussion.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thanks, Adrian.
Thank you.
And Adrian will hang out in the safe area outside while Justin comes in. So if you have further questions, we can access her again.
It says in this, are we supposed to, oh, no, that's just the update. Okay. As receive and file from Adrian. Hey, Justin.
Morning Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Just, just to clarify, are you wanting me to go through a kind of a general description of the Governor's executive orders, that what the commission would like? Just wanted to make sure.
Well, I think if it's, but if it mirrors pretty much what we do, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
You can start with that and then maybe just highlight the exceptions.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that. As, as you all know, on Saturday, Governor Kelly announced Executive Order 20-16, which applies statewide to all 105 counties. It's a, it's a stay-at-home order. And specifically, for any counties like Sedgwick County that had stay-at-home orders that were already in place, it superseded the stay-at-home portions of those orders. And so our provisions that were enacted last Wednesday, effective last Wednesday by Dr. Minz's order, are no longer, the stay-at-home portion of that is no longer in place. We did get some clarification. Mike Papoun talked to the Governor's Chief Counsel earlier this week, and we got some clarification that our public gatherings provision of no more than 10 people, that is more restrictive than the Governor's, remains in place at this time. And I'll, I'll get to that in a little bit more as I go through kind of the differences, perhaps, between how we had been applying Dr. Minz's order and the Governor's order. I guess first off, I'd just say that, that they're probably 98, 99% the same. There aren't a lot of major differences. Some of the things that I think I would add that are slightly different, either based in the language in the Governor's executive order or interpretations that they've passed along. And keep in mind, this involves comparing our document with the Governor's. And they're, while they are similar in coverage, they're, they're not drafted the same. And the Governor's document also incorporates about 16-page Department of Homeland Security document within it. So it's not an easy analysis to compare the two. The, the first thing I'd mention is childcare facilities. Dr. Minz's order had restrictions on, you know, keeping groupings of children to 10 or less, and then also making sure not to intermingle the children from one group to another. It also had language about that the children, there should be only the children whose parents or guardians were performing essential business functions. The Governor's order essentially exempts out childcare facilities, makes them an essential business, and does not set any restrictions on what they would be able to do, you know, in that regard. So that essentially, I guess what I would say is that the childcare facilities are treated like they would be able to operate as they did before our Sedgwick County order went into place. Certainly, if they want to take their own precautions, that's a business decision they can make. Also, in interpreting the Governor's order, debt collection companies would be included as an essential business, or essential function, I should say, which would be contrary to how we had determined that under our, under Dr. Minz's order last week. A few other things that would be different. You know, I talked about the public gatherings provision. That, Dr. Minz's order is still in place. And to the extent that it was a stay-at-home order, that portion of the order's been superseded, but the public gatherings provision's still in place. And so if we're talking about religious services, which are exempted both under the Governor's stay-at-home order and her public gatherings provisions, those are, the Sedgwick County provisions are still in place. So if you have, you have churches, other religious organizations can still operate, but they would have to keep the public gatherings to no more than 10 people. And they would also have to maintain the social distancing, you know, that's included in Dr. Minz's order. Similar measures would apply to funerals as well. I guess I would add, just like our, like Dr. Minz's order, the Governor's order does not require that you have any paperwork showing that you're performing an essential function. I think that's a clear, that's something that's important to make clear to all the, everyone out there who's wondering that question. I'd also add that, you know, on the question of enforcement, the, if somebody violates the Governor's order, it can be a Class A misdemeanor. That's a sort, that is something that law enforcement, you know, whether it's with the cities or the sheriff's office, can, can investigate and enforce, just like any statute essentially. But, you know, there is the possibility for an offense to be a Class A misdemeanor, which is, is a little bit different than Dr. Minz's order. And let's see if there's any other clarification. I think that's really it. I think really, like I said, for the most part, they cover the same territory. The other things, I think, I think, and Governor Kelly did say that her intent in drafting this was to have it apply similarly to larger counties, which of course would include Sedgwick County, to the orders that we've all had in place, whether it's here, Johnson County, Wyandotte County. And so I think that, you know, reading through it, they are quite similar. Be happy to stand for any questions.
So the, I guess that's been the question that some of us had, is the, the gray area in the church gatherings. So we still are under a 10-person or less church gathering?
That is correct, Chairman. And I did want to add, one of the things the Governor's Office has said is that they, they would like counties to assist in interpreting the Governor's order. But I do think it's important to point out that the Governor's Office, it's, it's the Governor's order, and the Governor's Office has a website where, where individual businesses can submit questions if they want to be considered essential, to get a finding specific to their business, whether they're essential or not. They've got, they've got an email address, keff@ks.gov. And then they also have a frequently asked questions page that shows that. So, you know, even if our, if the county may interpret this, our interpretations are just our best interpretation of the Governor's order. But, but certainly, the Governor can come in and override that, and it's certainly opined on a handful of issues on their frequently asked questions and other items as well.
Say that email address again.
Sure. K E F F @ K S .gov.
K E F F @ K S .gov.
That's correct.
Okay. And then there's their frequently asked questions page in there?
That's correct. If you go to the Governor's page, it's mentioned, it's highlighted pretty prominently. There's, there's a COVID-19 resource center that I think the KDHE maintains.
Okay. In, in a follow-up from what Tom had said about the grocery stores, what would be the process if it be the will of the, of the board that, that we would like to add one, one person per, or encourage one person per, to visit, to buy groceries without?
I think that's a good question. I, I think first off, and I, and Mike Papoun can, can correct me if I, if I'm off on any of this thinking, but I think one of the things we'd probably want to do first off is try to reach out to the Governor's Counsel to see if, if, in their opinion, that would be violating the stay-at-home order the Governor's put in place. They may be okay with that. And I think that that may also fit into something akin to a limiting public gatherings. The Board of County Commissioners has that power under KSA 65119. And so I think that there may be an ability to do that. I know the Governor's Counsel has made some comments that her order is about staying at home and being an essential business. And so this, this may or may not, I'm not 100% sure. But I think we'd want to get clarification from them. But then if that is something that could be done, I think that either Dr. Minz, he has power to limit public gatherings, also the Board of Health. The Board of County Commissioners sitting as the Board of Health similarly has those powers. That's actually a shared power under KSA 65119.
Okay.
And I think we could report back if that's, if the commission would like to direct us to do that.
Tom, you want to confirm with the grocers if they would like us to? Or you think that they would like us to move on?
I think they would like, I think they would like a directive. And to Justin's point, I think this is something we can research with the state and take, if it's okay with the commission, take it directly to Dr. Minz as an ask to put some type of directive out on that.
Is there any objection from the commission to move on, forward on that?
I don't have an objection, but I would say that there are some families in our community that don't have the ability to only have one. And for those single parents out there who don't have any resources or anybody to help, you know, so there has to be, we have to take that into consideration.
I think that's a good point.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I guess, a clarification. Since this is a private business, don't they have the, the authority currently as a private business to limit who comes into their property and conducts business? I mean, as long as they're not.
That's a good question.
I mean, I don't know that we have to do this. I mean, I think it's, I understand the thought behind it. But they're, they're acting like they don't have the authority. But I think just as, as a private property, do they not have the authority to regulate?
To post a sign or something that says, please, one, without, without exceptions?
If they really want to do this, I think they have the authority.
And I think, Commissioner Howell, I think you're right. I think, especially in the social distancing and that kind of stuff. I think that the stores could probably do that. And I defer to Tom on if they expressed any interest in kind of having a uniform set of rules on that, or if there was.
Yeah. Commissioner Howell, I believe, I believe you're exactly correct. They have the ability to do this. I think they are reaching out to us as a Board of Health, to you as a Board of Health, and to Dr. Minz as a health expert to give guidance, if that's good and prudent policy, and if it is, to state so publicly and, and support their efforts to manage their stores safely and effectively. If that answers your question.
I guess there are some stores out there that may have not experienced the problem. So I, you know, I just hate for us to be, to issue, if you will, a mandate to all stores when some stores may want to do this and have, are having issues, and other stores maybe not. So again, I, I want to be, I want to be clear that we recommend it. I guess, recommend anything that reduces the spread of COVID-19. Absolutely. I'm certainly on, in agreement with, in agreement with that. But I'm not sure this is, this is necessary, but.
Tom, once you get back with the grocers and, and, I mean, we could do a, you know, a public statement that says what, I respect what you're saying and I respect what.
Well, let me go a little bit further. Let's talk about other stores, you know, any kind of retail store that's open right now. We'll talk about the hardware store.
Right.
Sometimes there's four, five people walking in there together as a family. That's not necessary any more than grocery store would be. So why, why, why are we singling out a single business when any store that's open right now, we ought to minimize, you know, the number of people in there doing the same thing?
That's probably a prudent, that's prudent comment to, to say that we should be, we could take a, in our, in our statements, encourage public to, to keep the minimal to one unless, on, on any, any attendance that you're coming in for retail.
It's just, it's a best practice. And I think that anybody ought to hear that and say, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to adopt, if you will, the, the idea and encourage, encourage people to minimize the number of people coming into, into the store. That seems reasonable. And anybody who would want to take that recommendation, they could certainly implement that and say, this is a best practice. We, we want to participate in reducing the spread of COVID-19. So we're going to implement that here. And I think without exception, there are going to be, I'm sorry, there are going to be exceptions where someone needs help.
And the business.
Or maybe they have to go together for whatever reason. I don't want to have to, to say, well, there's a law now in place that says you can't do that.
Right.
So I just think we ought to have a little, a little bit of grace in our thought on this.
Yeah. Tom, could you have, just give that feedback back to them?
I will, sir.
We're glad to support minimal attendance in any retail business.
And to be fair, I have constant communications with tier-one providers and our own emergency services. The tier-twos that we have stood up is only food distribution at this point. We have not reached out to what I would consider tier-threes, hardware stores, other things that are open, but not maybe as critical as food acquisitions. So I will convey that back to the grocers, sir.
Okay. Thank you. What else? Yes?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to briefly, hopefully, talk about the issue that we found out this weekend about the Trust Women's Clinic being open still and that they've been actively recruiting people to come in from out of state. This weekend, I was troubled to learn from individuals that I know that were down at the clinic that there were not just people from Oklahoma like I had initially heard, based on the Facebook posts and Twitter posts, but also tags from Texas, Ohio, Florida, and even Canada. And the doctor that came in, by all accounts, actually came from Milwaukee. It was initially reported that she came from California. But she came in, this particular Dr. Chastain, I believe the name is, came from Milwaukee. Really, Mr. Chair, what, what bothers me is regardless if you're pro-life or pro-choice, we as a community need to be concerned about the spread of COVID-19 and encouraging people to travel from other areas, and, and many areas with lots of outbreak, like Texas, which is a hotspot. Oklahoma City's had quite, quite a big outbreak in these other areas. We're not sure where all these people came from. But we have certain restrictions that if people travel to Wichita from a hotspot, they're supposed to self-quarantine for 14 days. I've had friends that went to Florida for spring break. They came back and they, they were asked to be quarantined for 14 days. How do we know these individuals that are coming into our community are actually self-quarantining for 14 days, like the law-abiding citizens that live here in Wichita that traveled from out of state are self-quarantining for 14 days? That, that truly concerns me because we've also shut down places like dental offices. I've, I've received a litany of emails from people that haven't been able to get normal services from their doctors, whether that's a specialist doctor, their family physician. But they've been denied care right now because of the shutdown. And that's within our own community. That, it just, it's wild to me that people are coming in from the whole region and that there's a lot of people that support that when we should be trying to mitigate the spread. So with that, Mr. Chair, I know that we're not in control. So with that, Mr. Chair, I know that we're not in control at this point, but I would like after the discussion to make a motion that, that we send, send a letter asking for the Trust Women's Abortion Clinic to be shut down like all these other offices have been, at least until this COVID-19 stay-at-home order is in effect.
Okay. Did we, have we shut down dental offices? I think those are all decisions they've made.
Yeah. The American Dental Association put out something saying they should shut. So that wasn't something that we did. They did it on their own.
Right. Same with the medical, any of the medical community that's choosing to do essential or non-essential services have done it on their own through there. But, okay.
I, I have something I'd like to discuss. I think because we, of, of the circumstances today and this topic, while it's been discussed a lot and I'd like to move past, I think it's only fair that we have into the record and read on today's broadcast, a letter from Julie Burkhart, the founder and CEO of Trust Women. So it says, Dear Chairman Meitzner and County Commissioners, thank you for hearing my testimony today. My name is Julie Burkhart and I am the founder and CEO of Trust Women, which operates Trust Women Wichita at 5107 East Kellogg Drive in Sedgwick County, Kansas. My testimony today is an opposition to the county commission's consideration for altering Trust Women's health care services from essential to non-essential. Trust Women Wichita first began seeing patients on April 3rd, 2013. The clinic has been a valuable community partner since its, since its opening and provides services such as well-woman exams, family planning care, transgender visits, STI and STD testing, primary care and abortion services. In 2019, we saw 2,422 patients serving people from all corners of the state of Kansas. In our seven years of service, we have seen well over 13,000 patients for a variety of health care needs. Trust Women's mission is to provide health care, including reproductive health, to underserved communities. Thousands of people would go without care if they could not turn to Trust Women. If the commission were to strip our essential health care determination, it would only be detrimental to the people of Kansas who need access to our services. On March 30th, 2020, the World Health Organization released a press statement, which has been included for your consideration, announcing guidance to counties, to countries, excuse me, regarding essential health care during the COVID-19 pandemic. Reproductive health care was one of the many essential services listed that should remain available to people around the globe, including Sedgwick County, Kansas. Additionally, a myriad of US-based professional medical organizations such as the American College of Obst, Obst, oh my gosh, I can't say this word, Obst, and gynecologists, obst, obstetricians. Obstetricians, thank you, my friends, and gynecologist, and the American Board of Obstetrics and Gynecology, together with the American Association of Gynecological Laposcoprics, the American Gynecological and Obst, Obstetrical Society, the American Society of Reproductive Medicine, and the Society for Academic Specialists in General Obstetric, I can't, sorry, these words are hard for me, and gynecology. The Society of Family Planning and the Society for Maternal-Fetal Medicine issued a joint statement on March 18th, 2020, that reproductive health care is an essential health service. They stated abortion is an essential component of comprehensive health care. It is also time-sensitive service for which a delay of several weeks or in some cases days may increase the risk or potentially make it completely inaccessible. The consequences of being unable to obtain abortion profoundly impact a person's life, health, and well-being. Please find their statement attached for your consideration. If our clinic is shuttered, which is the only health care facility up for discussion today, your actions will damage and would prove detrimental to the lives of the people in Sedgwick County. In this time of crisis, we must be taking the following steps to ensure that citizens, as well as health care providers, are safe. One, we must be doing what we can do to ensure that people are receiving essential health care as close to home as possible. Two, we must help people access essential health care in the quickest, most expedient way possible. Three, we must be looking for solutions for the COVID-19 pandemic instead of letting political posturing derail us from this pressing and critical task at hand. People's lives literally depend on it. By denying people abortion access, the commission will be doing nothing more than putting people in harm's way during the health care crisis in the United States. One, the commission's action will force people to travel for essential health care to states such as Colorado or New Mexico when they should otherwise be encouraging people to stick close to home. Two, pregnant women can become desperate and try to terminate pregnancies without qualified medical guidance. Three, if people are pregnant longer than they wish to be, they will be also increased for negative health outcomes if they are diagnosed with COVID-19. Four, patients may all, otherwise qualify for a medical abortion in which two medications are given to patients and in which we are recommending that people choose early in pregnancy in order to limit time in the clinic may be pushed into an aspiration procedure. Women must already navigate the already existing barriers and obstacles to abortion access such as transportation, childcare, and family obligations. Let's not put another barrier in front of people at this time. Let's not say to people that their lives do not matter. Lastly, we have fielded numerous phone calls from people who are scared, concerned, and frantic. These patients are afraid that they will not be able to access this essential health care service. As a commission, I encourage you to vote this suggested restriction down. If you vote no in this measure and rejecting shuttering Trust Women Wichita, it will send a message to the citizens of Sedgwick County that you care about health, welfare, and safety of each and every person, even pregnant women, and that you can put political agendas aside during this time of crisis. She says she would be happy to answer any questions and you can reach her at her office number 316-260-6934. And I read that because she can't be here today. And so that's why I have entered that into the record. Please forgive my mispronunciation of a bunch of words. Here's the thing, and I'll just say this, this is so exhausting. This time right now is so exhausting and we have absolutely no time to waste. So what we're doing right now is wasting the time that we need to be talking about other critical things in our community. We have no legal authority to do what you're wanting to do. And the idea that we're discussing it just to write a letter is absolutely political grandstanding at its finest. I feel like I'm in a campaign rally. Regardless of how we feel about this topic, we have no course of action. So what is the point of this? The governor said yesterday in her press conference that women's clinics provide essential health care. So from her own mouth, she said how she feels about this. What makes us think that she's going to change her mind by a, by a letter that's written discussing a women's health clinic coming from a male majority? And just to set the record straight, I want to reiterate that this women's clinic provides more than what a few commissioners are making it out to be. Is it really in our best interest to take time that we could be rallying community around things that we can control? We have some very pressing issues. Think about all the children. We just had a proclamation declaring this Child Abuse Awareness Month. Think about all those children in our community that rely on school for safety and nutrition. I feel very fortunate that I have a computer and access from the three kids at my home, but what about those kids who don't? What about those children who are wondering where their next meal will come from? It's time to think about the kids in this community for, 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 for some whose only escape is school. With all the other issues in our community, I'm absolutely appalled that we as commissioners would be focusing on trying to do something that we as a board cannot even do. Please, let's get back to the needs at hand right now and stop worrying about how one commissioner can move forward with his political agenda.
Okay. Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I, I truly do understand, and it's frustrating sometimes on the power that we have here. We, we have an appointed individual that has more authority than the five of us as the Board of Health. And that concerns me. Possibly we need to take a look at some of the statutes next year when we go into our legislative agenda to make sure that, that the county commission does have authority to, to make decisions that impact our community. With that said, and I agree with Commissioner Cruz, we started the, the meeting today with a proclamation on child abuse. I think that's kind of ironic in a way because we're talking about once they're born, we want to protect them, but we forget about the ones that aren't born yet, that we're taking the lives of, of those individuals. And that, that's very concerning. Another point that was made was some things on different areas that are closed. I've had coming up both an eye appointment and a dental appointment, both were, were canceled by the, the provider. I had a email from a gentleman who's been laid off as an aircraft worker. He needs a knee replacement. His insurance is running out, actually ran out the end of March, unfortunately. I contacted the manager and Adrian to see if they could knew of anyone that would still perform some type of an electrics, elective surgery for this individual because he couldn't get his knee replaced and he wasn't going to have, have an opportunity to do it once his, his insurance ran out. That was an elective surgery that was needed. He needed to go back to work eventually and couldn't even go back to work because of the knee surgery. So that's a little bit concerning to me, that that's an elective surgery that's critical to that individual. What we're talking about right here is really a global pandemic, a pandemic. And it is reason to consider some type of action by this board. One thing that's happening is that the PPE is being used, that could be used to protect our hospital workers to save lives. In addition, we need to consider the travel that's, that's being incurred as a result of people coming into our community. I do understand that this clinic provides health services for, beyond abortion. And I don't believe that we need to shutter that organization because they do provide other needs for women that are needed. I also got the letter from Julie Burkhart and she had attached to that, as Commissioner Cruz mentioned, the World Health Organization guidelines. And let me read parts out of that guidelines. It said, "Countries should identify essential services that will be prioritized in their efforts to maintain continuity of service delivery, to make strategic shifts, to ensure that increasingly limited resources provide maximum benefit for the population." Then in the next paragraph, it says, "Some examples of essential services include routine vaccination, reproductive health services, including care during pregnancy and childbirth, care of young infants and older adults, and so forth." It does not say abortion in that statement anywhere from, from the World Health Organization. It does mention the reproductive health, and I agree. And I understand that, that that clinic provides reproductive health. So I don't know that we want to shutter that organization. I think we need to limit the elective surgeries, the elective procedures that are going on. So because this is a global pandemic, I think it's a very good reason for us to consider a letter to the governor and Dr. Minns, asking them to rule or to give us guidance on whether or not that, that the abortion portion of what they provide is an elective, is essential. So therefore, if we do put out a, a letter, and I would support a motion that we provide a letter to both Dr. Minns and to the governor, and in that letter, we ask them on the abortion portion of the elective, whether that is essential or not, and the rest of the operation that, at that women's health clinic that are, are women's health related, that we don't take action on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the discussion. I, I, I've not talked to Commissioner O'Donnell about this, but I'm going to ask a clarification question because I've, as I read the emails since last night and this morning, one of the arguments that was made was that, that a commissioner, I guess presumably you, were over there taking pictures of license plates. I wanted to clarify whether that actually happened or not. Would you like to speak to that?
Oh, well, that.
I have other questions as well, but I want to give you a chance to please speak to that if you can.
No, no, no. Those were provided to me by the people that provided me the rest of the information.
Right. Thank you. That's what I thought. And I, I think I have the same information probably, same, some of the same people reached out to me as well. Again, I, I, you know, this COVID-19 is a very serious matter and some of the stories I'm hearing that's, that's happening over there are, are very disturbing. I have some data in front of me. Apparently, Trust Women Organization, according to an article that was, that came out on March 23rd, she confirmed that all 13 of her abortionists are flown in from outside of Kansas and Oklahoma. She talks, and that's been confirmed in several news stories. Then there, there was eyewitnesses reported seeing California-based abortionists drive to the clinic in a car with California tags. And I've heard that from numerous people, presumably to possibly avoid question, you know, questions about needing to, to self-quarantine. I don't know if that's the motivation or not, but that's been, that's been, that's been discussed, maybe, maybe that was the motivation. But nevertheless, they have the name of the, of the person that traveled in and where her normal office is, they're in California, and that is a hotspot. I have some friends who, who went to a wedding just a couple of weeks ago in California. In fact, they weren't able, able to attend the wedding because of what's going on there in California, but they did travel to California. When they got back, they were told to quarantine. In fact, they're still being quarantined right now. And so we know California is one of those locations, and yet this person drove in from California presumably as providing services to people who are from all over the country, not, not just from Wichita. And there are people traveling from Oklahoma. I see here a couple of posts, I don't know if this is from Facebook or Twitter or where it came from, but they actually are at, you mentioned the advertising. It says that Trust Women is committed to providing care and we are doing all we can to help those in Oklahoma City despite this ridiculous decision. If you have any questions, please call our Wichita clinic. And they go on. And so they're, they're advertising, if you will, outside of our area, bringing people in. And there have, there have been license plates from, from lots of places across the country that have been seen going in, in and out of that facility. So that is very concerning. Another thing that's really disturbing is, I guess, the, the interactions that have happened there in, in front of the building. Again, we talk about people are allowed to walk on the sidewalk and, and that's been exempted. So again, people were standing out in front of that facility, walking back and forth. Unless we want to be very specific, it sounds like that has been carved out as an essential, should say, has been carved out as, as non-risky. And so we've allowed that to happen. People are exercising across the community. But having said that, there's a, a security guard, I won't give his name, but he came out of the facility and, and handed one of the people out there a, a, a bag with vomit in it and used Kleenexes. And so I'm not saying, again, I'm not, I've not substantiated the stories, but that's what's been reported. And I've talked to people that said they, they witnessed it and said this was what happened. So if this is the type of behavior that's going on, I have very grave concerns about, about the spread of COVID-19. Secondly, if this is not essential, they are using PPE, personal protective equipment that could be used in our hospitals, for example, or by our, our first responders. And so we have a very limited supply. We are short, we know we're short. I have, I have concerns about this facility continuing to operate the way it has been, bringing people in, advertising outside of our, outside of our community, bringing people in from across the country to get services here in Wichita. And apparently a total disregard for what I consider to be very common sense things, trying to reduce the spread of COVID-19. So with, with that in mind, I, I think a, a motion probably should be made, a recommendation should be made. And so I, I looked at Commissioner O'Donnell to hopefully make that motion. I would like to, to let you know, I think that there are, again, my, my, my motivation is not about the health care that they provide. It's about the fact that they are doing procedures there with, with staff that come from outside our community and, and patients come from outside our community. And they're utilizing and consuming, if you will, PPE, which is very, very needed in our, in our community for other, other more urgent and essential operations like within our hospital, for example. So I think that a motion, a recommendation should be made to Dr. Minns and to the governor. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make that motion. I'm going to read a quick email that we received from a doctor mainly because I, I, I am very concerned that, that I read that letter from Julie Burkhart as well, and it just concerns me that she keeps talking about the crisis we're in. But if that were the truth, she wouldn't, she would care more about. But if that were the truth, she wouldn't, she would care more about exposing Wichitaans to more individuals here that may or may not be carrying the COVID-19. She would be concerned about potentially having those individuals that might come from rural areas, getting it here if they're going to our gas stations or some of our other tier-one or tier-two facilities, and taking it back to their neighborhoods and their communities. It just, I wish that her argument held water, but unfortunately, it's not because she's encouraging people to come to Wichita. And this isn't about abortion, this is about trying to stop the spread of COVID-19, and we have a, we have an entity that is encouraging out-of-state travel with no signs of quarantine, self-quarantine being in effect. But this letter that I'm going to read is from Dr. Lisa Gilbert. She's with Ascensia Via Christi, but also with the KU School of Medicine, and she says, "Dear Sedgwick County Commission officials, thank you for receiving public comments on this important decision. I urge you to close Trust Women during this pandemic. As a healthcare provider who works with women every day, including obstetrics, I understand and value the importance of women's health. I also recognize the difference between essential and nonessential care during this outbreak. Continuing to perform abortions is not essential, nor, for that matter, is abortion healthcare because it kills our youngest and most vulnerable Kansans. We are in a crucial battle to protect all Kansans regardless of age or other factors. Let us shelter those who most need it, whether elders in nursing homes, the medically vulnerable, the homeless, or those still living in the womb. We are also learning more about coronavirus every day, including how easily it is spread from pre-symptomatic to asymptomatic carriers, including in a healthcare setting. This puts other women at risk of contracting it, as well as the staff in the abortion clinics. We also desperately need personal protective equipment as we plan for unprecedented surge in the next several months. With regard to telemedicine abortions, especially without ultrasound, this is extremely dangerous. Women could have an ectopic pregnancy, be further along than anticipated, or have a rare kind of cancer that mimics pregnancy, a molar pregnancy, resulting in a situation with abortion medications being ineffective at best and life-threatening to the woman at worst. We already know that some women who receive pills become infected of their need of DNC, meaning further encounters in a healthcare system, and where ultrasound and lab work become unnecessary, along with possible hospitalization. Others need blood, which is in short supply. This is a very dangerous situation for women. I encourage all abortions to be stopped at this time as we anticipate a tsunami surge throughout our healthcare systems so we can save the lives of women and men during this pandemic. Let us help our littlest and equally vulnerable Kansans shelter in place. Very respectfully, Lisa." So with that, I have a motion here. I move to recommend to Governor Kelly, our health officer, Dr. Menz, and KDHE, that abortion clinics, including the Trust Women's Clinic, be closed during this time of emergency as a restriction on nonessential medical procedures.
I have one question. Are we, what are the legal ramifications of us pinpointing and, you know, singling out one business?
Commissioner Cruz, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. I don't believe in that motion, we're singling out one business if, and this is a very volatile issue across the United States at this time, Ohio, Iowa, Texas, Oklahoma, Mississippi, a number of states, and a number of governors have done this, and my understanding when they have done this, they've done this from the standpoint of the governor taking action to, under the stay-at-home order, and the nonessential businesses not doing elective procedures during this period of time of the emergency. So the fact that this could be construed as a nonessential service, now I know that there's the other argument that is essential, but the fact that it could be construed would be part of, part of an overarching order that would prohibit all elective types of procedures and not just single, we wouldn't be just singling out one abortion clinic in Wichita, Kansas.
So do we, do we might see, you know, at the end of this, there's been talk of people coming from out of state, are we going to be checking other license plates of every single business around town to see where people are from? Because if that's an argument that we don't want people to travel, how are we not going to, you know, next week, when five other businesses come at me and say, "Well, I've had 15 different license plates in my," I mean, it just seems like we're opening ourselves up for something when we could really be using our time to be discussing more important topics than this. This is nothing more than a political game. I mean, let's just call it what it is. It's an election year, I get it, Michael, but that's all that you're doing. We all see it.
Mike, you want to repeat your motion?
Yes.
So we...
I move to recommend to Governor Kelly and our health officer, Dr. Menz, and KDHE, that abortion clinics, including Trust Women's, be closed during this time of emergency as a restriction on nonessential medical procedures.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
I don't know about complete closure, that's my question.
Yep.
My question is, I agree that we need to close down nonessential things such as abortion, but I think that there are other functions that are performed that protect women's health. That's what my concern is. If we shutter that, are there other functions that they're performing that are helping women in their health needs?
I think I'd like to amend my motion, Mr. Chairman. I move to recommend to Governor Kelly and our health officer, Dr. Menz, and KDHE, that abortion services, including those at Trust Women's Clinic, be closed during this time of emergency as a restriction on nonessential medical procedures.
Commissioner, I'd second that.
Okay, so are we asking the governor to rule on if this is essential? Or are we asking the governor to, essential or nonessential procedure? Or are we asking the governor to, say it again, to close, to ban abortion during this timeframe?
Services, yes.
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 Okay. So let's make sure we got this motion straight. So why don't you repeat your amended motion that got seconded?
I move to recommend to Governor Kelly and our health officer, Dr. Menz, and KDHE, that abortion services, including those at Trust Women's Clinic, be closed during this time of emergency as a restriction on nonessential medical procedures.
So the clinic would stay open, though?
Yeah.
And that's the motion you seconded, Mr. Dennis? You seconded that, right?
Yeah, my concern is the other needs that they might provide. I don't want any needs that are revolve around abortion, but if there are other health needs that women need, that's my concern.
Bill, okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Howell?
Just a question. So businesses that have close contact with people, are we speaking to the practice of those businesses and how they conduct, how they protect, if you will, the staff and the patients from the spread of COVID-19? In other words, there are some businesses that are not allowed, for example, the haircutting, for example, is not allowed because of the close contact that you would have, or someone that might spread that virus. And so, knowing, I guess, some of the accusations that have been made, if they stop the abortion services only, and they don't address the issue of PPE and social distancing and protecting, if you will, the staff and the patients as they're, I guess, interacting in whichever way they have to interact, is that enough? I mean, have we spoken enough to that issue that this is implied? If there's a doctor out, if there's a doctor's office out there somewhere, and you must see a patient for something that is critical and essential, I would assume that they're going to do everything they can to minimize the spread of COVID-19. I don't know how to communicate that to this facility because they've clearly demonstrated a disregard, if you will, for protecting people. Again, I have other stories I've heard about, I have not substantiated, but there are very disturbing things that have happened. So I'm just curious about how do we speak to those concerns?
My thought is that every medical supply, service supplier is practicing whatever they need to do for COVID-19 protection. I mean, every hospital is doing something today, and every medical facility, and every doctor that's seeing patients is, I'm sure, doing something.
Okay. Well, I guess we won't speak to that specifically, but I would just want to say, if anybody is in fact providing a service of whatever interaction they must have, they need to do everything they can to have best practices to minimize the spread of COVID-19. And some of the things that have happened there, if these continue, I think we'll need to talk about this again in the future.
Sure.
Because this is, again, it's extremely disturbing, some of the things that have happened in the last few weeks, last couple of weeks. So if I hear any more reports about that type of stuff, we're going to have to talk about this one more time.
So I think that there's a little, what concerns me is that we have one article that's been written that is vastly untrue with facts that are from, pulled out of thin air. The thing that we need to understand is, what you're going to limit is, if I'm raped in the middle of the night and this goes on for another eight weeks, are you going to make me have my rapist's baby? Are you going to make a woman who is going to die because of the baby? Are you going to make her, are you going to make her die? Like, those are the types of things that you're asking. I mean, we could get into this debate about abortion, but that's literally what you're trying to do.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a few comments when I address what Commissioner Howell mentioned. In all of the, our orders, Dr. Menz's orders, and in the governor's orders, the gathering restrictions do not apply to a number of businesses. There are a number of exceptions. Those include grocery stores, which we were talking about earlier, they include doctors, clinics, medical facilities. I think it's been, I think the idea was to leave it up to these businesses to follow the guidance of the social distancing and not within six feet and all of that. And if you've been in, I've been in a number of stores and they've been doing this, and that's in all of the governor's, or her orders and in Dr. Menz's orders. Just because these businesses are exempt from the gathering restrictions doesn't mean they don't have to comply with the social distancing and do what they can to protect their patrons. And with regard to Commissioner Cruz's last comment, I would assume that if the governor took any action on this, and that's a big if, because I think the governor's already commented that she believes that this is an essential service, but if the governor took action, in most states, the governors have carved out an exception for the health and safety of the woman when that issue has come up. And that would, you get that situation, that would be an essential medical procedure. But that exception's already been carved out, at least the one I reviewed in Texas. So that's all I have at this time.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm not ignoring the comments from Commissioner Cruz earlier. I mean, my heart does break for women that are put in those situations. I have family members that have been sexually assaulted, myself, that have been put in situations that no one would want to dream about. So my heart does break for them. This is truly, we are at an unprecedented time with COVID-19, and limiting exposure, we're already putting people that are vulnerable, putting them in a potentially much more vulnerable situation by not knowing if these people practicing at the clinic have the virus, have come in contact with other people with the virus. It's extremely concerning to me, just knowing the amount of effort they're putting into bringing people into our community, even fundraising off of it. And in situations of life of mother, those women wouldn't be going to the abortion clinic anyway, they'd be going to the hospital, which has all the ability to perform any necessary procedure at the hospital if a mother's life is truly in danger. So I'm not taking any of that lightly. This isn't, this isn't political, this is concern about human life, protecting life, whether it's the unborn or individuals that may or may not come in contact with COVID-19, and trying to limit the spread, that I think we're all committed to trying to limit that spread. So that's all I have to say. I don't want to belabor the point anymore, Mr. Chairman.
There are no hospitals in Sedgwick County that see people. Did you know that? I mean, I feel like you're just speaking out of your, I don't feel like you are really speaking factually about this.
I don't feel like you're speaking factually, but I'm not going to accuse you of that.
Okay, let's move on then. Commissioner Howell?
Not accusing, I'm just stating facts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to consider a minor amendment to your motion to discuss it. That is, if there's any providers that come from out of state, from a community spread, a community spread, community, that's classified as community spread virus, that they would also have to go through a quarantine period before they would be allowed to provide any services at the clinic. Because again, I want someone traveling from California to come in, I don't want them to provide services until they've gone through a 14-day quarantine period. That would make sense to me that we should not allow someone to travel in without going through that quarantine process if they're from a community spread community.
Would that be a second motion, though?
I can make a second motion.
Because I think that would apply to more than just...
Right. I would, there's no way I could support that. I mean, we would have a business that...
Right.
Spirit has people coming into work from Northern Oklahoma.
Okay.
So it'd be very difficult to...
I will withdraw my amendment discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis?
And then just to clarify what the motion is, in this letter, we want all actions in this clinic that involve abortions.
Yes, abortion services.
All abortion services.
Yes, sir, that's what I said.
As I said before, I'm always concerned about reproductive health services, but I am more concerned about abortion services.
Yes, sir, that's what, that's, I read it twice, yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, call the next item, please.
Did we have a motion for item E?
Motion to receive and file.
I move that we receive and file. Good.
Been a motion a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item F, Central Plains Area Agency on Aging Affiliation Agreement with Northwest Kansas Area Agency on Aging, Inc., for the Administrative Case Management Services Contract.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Sinead Graham, Director, Department on Aging. I bring before you today a contract that is between the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging and the Northwest Kansas Area Agency on Aging. This is for a brand-new service that has been authorized by the state and will be reimbursed by the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. It is a statewide contract, Northwest Kansas AAA is the lead contractor, and they will be subcontracting with the other 10 area agencies on aging. This service will start as soon as we have staff in place. It was, the contract is for January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2021, with an option to renew for an additional three years. It is for administrative case management, and what that service is, is assistance for individuals that are determined functionally eligible for the frail elderly, the physically disabled, and the traumatic brain injury waiver and the PACE program. This is a service that will be offered to them to help them apply for financial assistance, the Medicaid financial assistance, for those that want to access this service, that will be after they have been determined eligible for those waiver programs. And it will help them from the point, to help them apply for that financial assistance, gather all of the required data that's needed, all of the documents. We will have case managers that do that, and it will help them through that entire process and be the liaison between that individual and the state workers that are determining the financial assistance. They will also be helping them, the people that are eligible for the, that are seeking the crisis services under the physical disabilities waiver, and for the brain injury waiver, to help them gather all of the medical documentations that are required to access those services. So we are requesting to, for your approval of this contract. It does include the addition of five positions to the aging staffing table, that will be three case managers and two fiscal associates. The anticipated revenue over the two-year period is $570,000. And I would request that you approve the contract and authorize the following actions that are necessary to sign the documents, authorize establishment of budget... that are necessary to sign the documents, authorize establishment of budget authority, the implementation of the staffing table changes, and the personal considerations of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sinead. Is there any questions from the commission?
My questions are just, how is your department? First of all, thank you for this presentation, but I just kind of want to know, since, you know, you deal heavily with the senior population, how are things going?
They are, things are changing very quickly. We've been working intensely with our providers, with our contractors, specifically a lot of work with our nutrition providers, because that's one of the highest priority of services that we provide. We've been working a lot with the state. There is federal money that is coming down. Under the first act, there was additional money for congregate and home-delivered meals that has come down already. And so we are working with them to figure out how we have to track it and report it and to get that out to our contractors. Under the second, the stimulus bill that was passed, there will be additional money that will be coming out for in-home services, community support services, nutrition services, and caregiver services. We're working with our volunteer programs to get volunteers in place to help reach out to older adults that are isolated. They were already isolated, and during this pandemic, of course, that isolation is getting much more intense, along with the stress of this pandemic that we're experiencing and with them being the highest-risk population. We have worked with senior centers to make sure that they close their doors so that they weren't congregating people. We worked with our congregate nutrition programs to make sure that they were no longer having congregate sites, but moved their programs to a grab-and-go model. We've been in ongoing communication with the nutrition providers, beginning to see the impact of reduced numbers of volunteers. So we are prepared to repurpose our staff and our transportation vehicles. We've worked with Kansas Department of Transportation to make sure that we can utilize the drivers and the vehicles that come through them in different ways, so if they need to help deliver supplies, if they need to help deliver meals. So we have really been doing a lot of work internally to figure out kind of our coop pandemic plan. And our top services are the nutrition programs, transportation services, doing the assessments for the Medicaid waivers and the nursing home assessments, and also doing information and education and outreach. So we've really been moving staff around and kind of moving what they do. We've got all of our staff, except our drivers, working remotely now. We were able to do that almost two weeks ago. So we're maintaining connection. We moved all of our assessments to telephonic, so we're no longer going out and working in the consumer's home, but doing a lot of outreach. We're developing through this contract, we got a new service that is called Zip Whip, which will enable us to do text messaging, mass text messaging, from our landlines. So we've really continuing to work, now being involved with the Emergency Operations Center and also helping to coordinate some requests for some PPE for some of our nutrition providers and our transportation. So as you all know, the ground beneath this is shifting quickly, and we are responding. And congratulations to my staff for doing such great, quick work.
So if somebody wanted to access your services, what would be a good contact information for those out there who may need services at this time?
That would be our call center, and that number is 855-200-2372.
You want to say that again?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for all you do. I know this is a very stressful time for everybody. My years of service in senior living says that the number-one killer is isolation. And so we hope that people are reaching out and doing all that they can to connect with people who are shut in during this time. The last thing we want is for someone to feel disconnected from a very connected society for those who don't have a way to connect. So please use your phones, call your grandmas, call your, you know, churchgoers, and make sure that we have those people who you would normally see on the weekends at church or, you know, out and about to make sure they feel like they're still a part of this community and stay well as much as possible.
Thank you. And if you have needs, if you have somebody, a family member, or somebody you know that is isolated, please give us a call, and we can work to get them connected with someone who can give them a call. We call it the Care Ring Service. We have a lot of our RSVP volunteers, that they are no longer able to go to their volunteer sites, so they are available and ready to do this. Thank you.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to support the motion, but I do just want to have a clarification question. You may have already said it, but I'm reading, so I'm trying to keep up with everything here. The five new positions and the five new FTEs, are they covered fully through the contract, and there's no property tax funds going to those five positions?
Yes, that is correct. It will be fully funded with the grant monies, and we will ramp up as the business demand increases, but these will be fully funded.
Do we have office space for these folks to do their job, or we need to create some space?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we have space.
All my questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, consideration of seven items for procurement.
On this item, commissioners, we serve as the Board of Bids, and so Joe is here. And there's going to be others that can answer questions, if we have any, that will be dialed in in just a moment. Is anybody there? Okay. Not there.
They're all on mute until they have a question, and then they'll get on the phone.
Okay. You want to see if just one of them is available? Make sure.
Penny, are you on the line? Penny, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're just checking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all, our staff, for being available at this time and for muting your phones. And sorry for the awkwardness of this, but we will move through this item. Hi, Joe.
Good, hi. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Good to see you all. Purchasing and various departments are bringing to you seven recommendations for your approval. Our first recommendation is the 2020 asphalt surface recycling and paving for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Cutler Repaving Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $1,184,358.9. Our second item is river sand for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Conspect Incorporated, which they're doing business as Kansas Paving, and this is in the amount of $2.88 per ton. We're going to establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. The third item, Ford Police Interceptor Utility Marked Vehicles for Fleet Management and Sheriff's Office. We have a change in the recommendation from the printed version, and the recommendation is to accept the best value bid from Rustiak Ford, and that's in the amount of $383,990. And this best value selection is based on the seven-to-ten-week better delivery date. Item number four is wide-area riding mower for fleet management in Lake Afton Park. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Kansas Golf and Turf Incorporated based on the NJPA contract 062117-HTE, and that's in the amount of $88,925. Item number five is the election management software for the election office, and we have a correction to make on the table. The total for Conneq Incorporated should read as $177,000. And with that change, our recommendation is to accept the low proposal from Easy Vote Solutions Incorporated. This is in the amount of $137,750, and to establish contract pricing per the rates listed. Item number six is pickup, transportation, and disposal of hazardous waste for environmental resources, and this recommendation is to accept the overall low proposal from Clean Harbors Environmental Services Incorporated, and we're establishing contract pricing for one year with three one-year options to renew. And our final item, item seven, window cleaning services for facilities maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the low overall bid from BMW Building Maintenance LLC. They're doing business as Squeegee Squad of Wichita, and we're establishing contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
What was the name of their doing business? As Squeegee Squad?
The Squeegee Squad of Wichita.
Okay.
Move to approve boards and bids as briefed.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any questions? I commend the exception on the purchase of the vehicles as well.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. I think that's a good choice.
Thank you.
Been a motion in a second. No other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
That sounds like a different clerk behind me.
It's a different clerk. Okay.
Madam, thank you, staff, for being available. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda.
Good morning again. Commissioners, Tom Stoles with the manager's office recommend approval of consent items H through S.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve items H through S. Any questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
President? Aye. Sorry.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoon, is there anything to report legislatively?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I would just mention that I had an opportunity to talk yesterday with our contract lobbyist, Jason Watkins, and most of this is common knowledge, anyway, but the legislature was intending to come back in late April and still may do it, but they're already getting information that would seem that they're probably not going to be coming back by that time, and it may be pushed off if they go back into session at all, real session. They have already adopted a budget, so they don't need to go back into session, but that is the only new update that we have from our lobbyists on this issue, so.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Dennis.
The bills that we had that we were working so diligently...
Good question. I was going to ask the same.
What's happened to those? Will they carry forward to next year, or do we got to start from ground zero again?
Ground zero.
Ground zero, unfortunately.
I had two nods.
Election years, they don't. Non-election years, they do.
Very good.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that was good. Lot of push-ups.
Well, at least you got a good start on our legislative agenda for next year.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Any other? Madam Clerk, then, next item, please.
Other?
Is there anything in "other" that the commissioners would like to share? While I'm thinking of it, can I ask, Mr. Papoon, could you speak directly to Attorney General Derek Schmidt about this, what we talked about earlier, the frustration we're having with the commission wanting to listen to these, our medical review team, based on Corona, the coronavirus?
Mr. Chairman, it might be more appropriate to talk to our district attorney, Mark Bennett, because he will be the one enforcing any possible violation, and I'll be happy to do that.
Okay. It seems like there's just so much exceptions based on, and I clearly, I totally agree with the comments, and I've even felt, I've told them all individually, I feel horrible that we're listening to real-time information gathering, and we can't, they're not privy to hear the, some is very factual, some is planning on the hospital side, some has got a plea to say, we're waiting on this, we're waiting on that, we need communication with the state. So there are needs, and our hospitals are so, our regional hospitals at Wesley and Via Christi are so critical for this next two, three, four, or five weeks coming up, and I just, it's, I just think there could be either a request for clarification or even a request for an exception to allow, similar to what Commissioner Dennis was saying, listening in on other calls. So thank you if you would take that as a potential to do. I'd appreciate it. Any other? Yeah, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, I guess, ask a clarification question. When we have been doing these county briefings, we're at 11 o'clock, then they move them to 1 o'clock. Seems like they maybe even stop since then, so I'm just curious. What is our plan going forward with our county briefings? I think they've been very well received in the community. It's definitely worth our time to have that meeting, I believe, but what is our current plan to have those meetings at this point?
Well, and I'll let Tom address as well, but we were, we have the information sheet and then some updated information, and basically, they were just, we're almost read verbatim of what we determined to be factual information.
That's correct, sir. We're going to proceed ahead, Commissioner, with a written update every day at 1 o'clock available, and it will be aggressively pushed out. It won't be just, you have to log on to get it. We push out to a number of entities, the major stakeholders in town, and also any citizen can access that through the county website. So we're going to continue with that. Anything that's, and that was always deemed to be factual, updated numbers and information coming from Adrian, mostly, the Health Department, and anything past that which would not be considered normal routine, I think we would want to convene a special meeting and bring you all back in to discuss before we would push something out to the public.
One of the reasons I'm asking is because the main, the major news outlets have carried that meeting, and they all have their own numbers, but as the county's carried it on our own YouTube channel and our own Facebook page, those live briefings have had enormous visibility. I mean, as many as a thousand people on there at one time watching those meetings. I've taken an interest in that because this is a fairly new technology for Sedgwick County. We worked for years to get this done, and I appreciate the fact that Tony's doing a great job. This is a way for us to become a little bit more available and transparent and accountable to the public by having live feeds, and if we just simply put out a document, I'm afraid it won't get the same visibility that it will if we do the live meetings. And so I think there is value in having, whether it be just communications or someone, you know, do a quick live video. I think it gets much more visibility, and it continues to drive home the priorities and challenges of Sedgwick County. So I think it'd been invaluable to have those briefings. And so I would, I hate to see us simply say, the document's as good as the briefing's. I don't think it is.
Jim, you make a good point. I think there was a feeling maybe between Tom and I that it was getting kind of mundane in a way, but...
I don't think so.
Knowing what you're saying, and if you all would be available as well, I know we've got our comm staff working remotely at home, so I think that it's been coordination to get the information and then to get us set up and have Tony available for video. So there's been a little bit of that, but I see the value, and if you all are available too, when we could say, hey, can one of you come in at 1:00? If it's not me, type of stuff.
For the record, I'd be very glad to support that any way I possibly can. I do think there's value there. And on top of that, even the print articles have actually picked up comments through those briefings. So I just think there's a lot of value in having that live briefing. And plus, I don't know about you all, but I have subscribed to those channels, and I've clicked the notify button, so when we go live, I get a notification on my phone that there's a new briefing happening, and I go immediately to that link, and I'll notice it goes to 300, 400, 500, 1,000 people watching live. And then there's comments, and there's questions, and there's discussion, and there's news stories, and not just on our channel, but on other news channels as well. So this has been huge in trying to reach the public. I think if that's our goal, then we got to continue the process, and I'm glad to support that. I would also say, just a personal other, to any of my constituents or anybody that wants to reach out to me, I have been working from home. This is my first time to the courthouse in over a week. I am fully engaged. I'm giving it a similar time than I would if I was at the courthouse, but I'm logged in, I'm certainly available for anybody that wants to discuss any item, but just want to let you know, I am taking this seriously, and I am working from home, and I'm set up in my office, and I'm very glad to do so. So that's really all my only comments. Thank you so much. Yeah.
The others? We... We, what is, Madam, what's the next? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Executive session.
We're gonna go into executive session.
Should, should we do the fire first?
That's what I just was asking, Mr. Papoon. Mike?
We can, Mr. Chairman, we can do fire first, but, but to comply with the Open Meetings Act, if we go into exec, if we recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and go into the Board of County Commissioners sitting as Fire District Number One, we need to go back to the Board of County Commissioners sitting as a board and make sure when we come out of executive session that we do that in full view of the public and the press and, and all that. As long as we, we have that capability, then you can go either way on this.
I would vote we do the Fire District now. Would you guys vote that?
Yep.
All right. Let's go with the, it's a will of the commission. Let's go with the, we need to, so I need to adjourn?
Recess.
Recess. We'll recess the Board of Commission. Can use that finally. And we will, we will now call to order the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Now I can say present. I knew it was coming up.
Commissioner Dennis.
Also present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Any, we didn't have any public feedback, I guess, from emails or anything? So there's no public agenda items? So Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of March 11th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Fire District minutes of March 11th.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to approve the Fire District minutes. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item B, consideration of two items for procurement.
And we have a presentation from Joe. And again, we'll have, his chief is on the phone? I think so. Or somebody.
Brian, are you on the phone? Brian?
You have Chief Chris here in place of Chief Wilson.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Okay. Joe, welcome back.
Thank you. Joe Thomas, for the Record, purchasing director. And the purchasing department in Sedgwick County Fire District Number One, we have two items that we'd like to present to you for approval. Our first item is the personal protective equipment accessories for the Fire District. And this recommendation involves several vendors. There are the low bids from First Do Emergency Response Solutions LLC, doing business as First Do. We also have Danko Emergency Equipment and Municipal Emergency Services. And these are for the rates as shown. And we will be establishing contract pricing for two years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item is the four-wheel-drive utility bed fire squad trucks. And this recommendation is to accept the low-bid meeting specifications from Rusty Eck Ford. And this is in the amount of $157,508. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Okay, any questions on those items? Being none? Entertained a motion to approve?
Move to approve bids and contracts.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Morning again. Commissioners Tom Stills with the manager's office recommend approval of consent item C this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the consent item C. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Being no other items on the Fire Agenda, we will adjourn the Fire. The body of the Fire District Number One will adjourn. And we'll reopen our Sedgwick County Commission meeting. Do we need to call the roll again? Mike?
No.
Okay. All right, we're back. So Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Executive session.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:50 for consultation with an attorney for a, for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss two subjects, two cases of pending litigation. And the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:50.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for executive session. No other questions. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
So we will be in executive session, so Tony, make sure that the videos are now off. Do I take a two-minute break? Do I take a two-minute break? Yeah. Quick break, and we will start.
We just can't come back before that time. We can go after the time.
We have to wait two minutes.
We have two minutes.
Tony, hold up. Tony?
Tony?
Tony, wait.
Can we address it after the meeting? Commissioner?
You want the two minutes?
We need the two minutes.
We've got to be in executive session for me to ask a question in front of all the commissioners.
Can you hold on one minute?
Yep.
Okay, we got one minute. Go David. It's held.
Ask your question.
About one minute.
Yes, you can.
They can't hear it.
You can ask a question. Tony, you go in there for a second.
Oh, I can't.
Good point.
Well, my question is that this is the third or fourth bad accident that we've had recently. And...
This is not an executive... How we deal with a policy for our drivers is really not an executive session item. We need to...
I was talking about the wreck.
Okay.
We have returned from executive session. No action taken. And if there's any other items... I don't see any other items before the commission today. So we stand...
We just can't come back before that time. We can go after the time.
We have to wait two minutes. We have two minutes.
Tony, hold up. Tony?
Tony.
Tony, wait.
Can we address it after the meeting, Commissioner?
You want the two minutes?
We need the two minutes.
We've got to be in executive session for me to ask a question in front of all the commissioners.
Can you hold on one minute? Okay, we got one minute. Go, David. It's held.
Ask your question.
I can't.
You've got one minute.
Yes, you can.
They can't hear it.
You can ask a question. Tony, you go in there for a second.
Oh, I can't.
Good point.
Well, my question is that this is the third or fourth bad accident that we've had recently. And...
This is not an executive... Well, how we deal with a policy for our drivers is really not an executive session item. We need to...
I was talking about the wreck.
Okay.
We have returned from executive session. No action taken. And if there's any other items... I don't see any other items before the commission today. So we stand adjourned and please be safe and be at home as much as possible. We are adjourned.
Yeah, but I agree with you. But that's what I was asking. Why wouldn't we surprise a part of your own car? Have insurance. Think about it. We could give them a dollar a while and save money.
Latasha, Latasha, sir, I don't know. Just reside from the side.